I guess we're ready.
It's just difficult because any breed gets a bad name.
That sound must mean it's time, huh?
It's in their DNA. My dog, my big one is.
We'll call this meeting to order in the City Council. It's November 7th. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome. Glad to have you with us tonight. We need to start with a roll call. Ms. Harris, will you help us with that? Excellent, thank you. We have an agenda before us. Is there any concerns with that agenda before we move forward with it? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, your honor.
Mr. Perks, Mr. Lynch, seconding. Any discussion? If there's discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? We have an agenda. Next is the minutes for October 17th. Any concerns regarding those minutes? I appreciate your indulgence and your support. Councilman Welling and I were trying to go hunting. We had fun. We didn't have much success, but we had fun. Or I did anyway. Guess I can't speak for everybody else, but we'll acknowledge those as they've been prepared and go on to the work session minutes for October 24th. Any concerns regarding those? If not, we'll acknowledge those as well and we'll go on to the bills. We've got a warrant register with today's date on it. Questions? Comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
There are motions to approve the bill. Mr. Sellers, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Takes care of the bills. We've got a revenue and expenditure report for August. Any questions there, concerns? Trudy is telling me that our current revenues are up a little bit. Things are looking looking good. They have been in recent months, which is good. I'll entertain a motion to approve that report.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lynch, is there a motion? Is there a second?
Oh, second, your honor.
Perks, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Approves that report. Council comments? Mr. Lynch, what do you?
Nothing.
First, nothing. Mr. Lynch?
A little bit of snow headed our way, so be careful, please.
Yes, yes. Mr. Perks?
I have nothing to make.
Sellers?
I'm just gonna follow up a little bit. The days are getting shorter. We're getting starting to head towards holiday season. A lot of stress in the world. Be mindful of those around you that might be asking for help or calling out for help in subtle ways. Remember the suicide line, 988, and just be mindful of those and hopefully you can catch somebody because law enforcement doesn't like to go to suicides and neither do we like to hear about them, so.
Thank you. Second?
I'd like to take this opportunity right before Veterans Day to thank all our veterans and those that serve and have are currently serving, including most of my family and my son who's in Brazil. And we have a Veterans Day event at the Roundhouse this weekend as well, so a little early, but go vets.
Very well, thank you. I'll just say amen to that and we'll move on. We'll go to our public hearings and special orders and we'll start there with a public hearing for a call-up and review of an application by Mr. Osterling. Mr. Harris, I assume you're gonna be our hearing officer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mark Harris. I'm the city attorney and will be conducting the public hearing this evening.
Today's date is November 7th, 2023. This proceeding is being electronically recorded and this electronic recording will be considered the official record of the proceeding. This proceeding is a contested case hearing and will be conducted pursuant to the rules of practice and procedure of the Evanston City Council. The hearing is being held pursuant to mailed and published notices, which will be included in the record of this matter. The applicant shall have the burden of proof regarding the application. The hearing will proceed in the following manner. Planning staff will provide a background of the application and history of the application before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Testimony and evidence is first then received from Mr. Osterling, the applicant. All persons who testify will be required to approach the podium, state their name and mailing address. Anyone testifying will be placed under oath. Any person testifying will be subject to cross-examination by anyone with an opposing point of view and, in addition, may be asked questions by the council. The applicant will be allowed 10 minutes for a primary witness to present testimony and evidence. When the primary witness has concluded any testimony, then testimony may be received from anyone else who is in support of the application. Each additional witness will be allowed five minutes to present their testimony and evidence. When the applicant has concluded its case, testimony will be received from anyone opposing the application. All persons who testify will be required to approach the podium and state their name and mailing address. Anyone testifying will be placed under oath. Any person testifying will be subject to cross-examination by the applicant and, in addition, may be asked questions by the council. Any opposition to the application will be allowed 10 minutes for a primary witness to present testimony and evidence. When the primary witness has concluded any testimony, then testimony may be received from anyone else who speaks in opposition to the application. Each additional witness will be allowed five minutes to present their testimony and evidence. Only relevant and material evidence should be presented to the council and any party should avoid presenting unduly repetitive evidence. At the conclusion of testimony and submission of the evidence, the hearing of the evidence and taking of testimony will be closed. The council will then deliberate and enter decision regarding the application. The City Council shall consider the application as submitted, the planning staff's report, the Planning and Zoning Commission decision, and any additional evidence or testimony presented at the hearing. During deliberations, no further testimony or comment will be requested or made from the applicant or anyone in opposition. The council may have questions of procedure and application of rules of law from city staff. The City Council shall approve only those applications which it finds are in accordance with the regulations and standards of the code and the policies and intent of the comprehensive plan and other applicable city regulation, standards, and policies. The council may approve, conditionally approve, specifying the conditions or limitations on such approval, or deny the application. All decisions by the council shall be followed by findings of fact, conclusions of law, and an order entered. Ladies and gentlemen, the first matter for review is CP 185, a request by Todd Osterling for a conditional use permit to allow a detached accessory building to exceed 60% of the square foot size of the principal building's footprint and to allow the total of all detached accessory buildings to exceed 75% of the square foot size of the principal building's footprint for property located at 1600 West Center Street, Evanston, Wyoming, which is a low-density residential establishment. Mayor and members of the council, I think Mr. Jacobson has some information to provide the background of the application.
Thank you. So I will provide a quick history of the application. So Mr. Osterling submitted an application for a conditional use permit to exceed the maximum allowable size for an accessory building. The maximum allowable size for an accessory building in the city is, in this location, 60% of the footprint area of the house and the total of all accessory buildings on the property cannot exceed 75% unless they apply for a conditional use permit and a review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So the Planning and Zoning Commission met July 10th and reviewed the request. The location of the property is that it's a corner lot located at the intersection of 16th Street and West Center Street. It's highlighted. The highlighted is offset a little bit from the property, but it is the corner lot. Can you please advance? Okay. This is the site plan that was submitted minus the shed that's showing to the right side, bottom right corner of the graphic. So what the applicant had proposed was a 14-by-40 square foot garage and that's shown with the kind of the green shaded area. It complied with the setback requirements, 20 feet from the front yard, which is from West Center, five feet from the interior side yard. So it met setbacks in that regard. The building does exceed the 60% area of the footprint of the house and the total of all accessory buildings. There is an additional accessory building located up here in the corner. So the combined total of the proposed and the existing accessory buildings exceeds the 75% rule in our city code. So just prior to the public hearing, it was, so again, it was July 10th was the public hearing. Towards the end of June, we received a call from a neighbor that said, hey, we've got a shed that's moved in and that was a building permit obtained. A building permit was not obtained for the shed. When I posted the property for the public hearing, the Wednesday prior to July 10th, I verified that it was there and that's the approximate location of the shed. So there is a 10-foot interior or a street-side yard setback from 16th Street and that's indicated by this yellow line here. This is Rocky Mountain. So this is the 10-foot setback for the shed and this is the 20-foot setback from the front yard. So the shed is located in both of those. There is a visibility triangle, 30-foot visibility triangle. Illustrated that this 30-foot, 30-foot measure of lawn hole, driveways, and forming a right triangle. So the shed was also located within that. So we proceeded forward with the Planning Commission meeting. I made note in the staff report and you'll see that towards the end of my staff report. It's kind of in a bold text. It gives kind of a brief overview of how that all came about to staff's attention. And what that shed does with the addition of the shed, that adds to the total area that was being requested with the garage already. So that's in addition to. So the Planning Commission met on July 10th. They reviewed the request. They took that into consideration. They tabled the request for a two-month period for the applicant to do some remodeling improvements to his home and then gave him those two months to remove that shed. In the two months, September 11th was the next Planning Commission meeting that we worked to hear this. That was the meeting that the applicant did not show to that. So the applicant was, or the application was denied at that meeting. So that's kind of a brief overview.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of the application? If you would approach the podium and state your name and address and I will render an oath.
I mean, my name's Todd Osterling. I've lived in Evanston for 68 years.
Mr. Osterling, what's your address, please?
1600 Center Street. And I've lived at that address for 43 years.
Would you raise your right hand for me, please, sir? Do you solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Osterling.
Anyway, I've lived there for 43 years. I started the garage attempt in 1996. I don't know whether they show it on there, but I have the driveways been poured since 1996. Things happened where my wife and I couldn't finish that, so it's been turned into a place I can park my cars off the street at this moment. I'm applying to put a garage in there just so that I can remove anything else I got in there, clean up my property and so forth. As I applied for the application, begin with, they skipped a meeting between there. So it was a lengthy period of time between the meeting meant with the planning and zoning and when I applied, you know, originally wanted to apply. So what that did is put me in kind of a bind with some health problems that my wife is having. And after we, before then, I'd been trying to remove all the things in my home to make remodeling and some type of attempt to be able to bring my wife home when that came available. Since I didn't have the garage in that I was hoping to put in by the middle of the year there, I had to get something to put my belongings in my house into. And I'd looked into the U-Pods. I'd looked into the other storage, portable storage units that they had or available and stuff. And this one came available from these people up on the Martins up here and they offered me a cheaper price than I could have put all the U-Pods and all that stuff in. So I had that bring them in and put it in the space, the only place I could, besides where the garage had been being built. So it was put in there as far back as I could get it and everything else. I was, my idea of that was to aesthetically let the neighborhood know that I wasn't trying to bring in a bunch of orange buildings and stick out in front of my house. And basically, I have a lot and a half there. Where I plan on putting that garage is on the half lot that isn't attached to my original property where my house is. My house is 824 square feet. So you can see I'm bound up in space. And I've been, I'm a collector, as most of my friends know, and trying to remove all that stuff out of my home and still be able to try to bring my wife home and still be able to put this garage in, put me in kind of a bind. And I did what I could to be able to start the project in the first place. And I'm disabled. I can't move a lot. I don't have a lot of people around town that can help me anymore. My children work out of state. And so I did what I could. And all I'm asking is that I can put a garage up. So everything that I got there that they're... This building will be gone. This will be a garage. I will build a part my wife's vehicle in a, you know, dry garage. So when I move her out of my house, I can at least have a dry place to load her in my car. At this point, I'm not sure whether I will ever bring my wife home again. So it's, and each month that this goes on, it's costing me $8,500 a month for a room up at Rocky Mountain to have my wife in. I could have built two garages by now for the price of that. And all I'm asking is to build a garage. And it's on, like I said, it's on the half a lot of my house, of my property that's isn't contained with my house, was never contained with my house. It was bought extra so that I could build a garage in that spot. And now, now that I'm of age, I can actually try to build a place that I can hide my things, put my four-wheeler in, put my car in, and still have a driveway where I can pull off the street, keep the street clean. And that's all I'm asking. The house does not belong to me.
The house does not belong to you?
No. The house belongs to my, both of my boys. You know, and the biggest complaint I got was the shed. Like I said, if I had been able to put the garage in the first place, that shed would not have been there because I've already got a place to put it. My boys already want it. So it was cheaper to buy that shed for $4,000 than it was to bring in four pods. So I did what I, I was thinking about my neighbors to make it a better place for them to look at a shed anyway than a bunch of pods stuck around the front of my house. And my capabilities are very limited as far as any furniture movement or anything like that. I can move small boxes up to about 30, 40 pounds and that's it. And that's what I've been doing. I've destroyed half of my glass collection trying to pack that stuff away. And if anybody that knows about collecting, what that means.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Osterling? Any members of the council have any questions?
I just want to clarify. The green shaded rectangle, yeah, that's what you'd like to do.
Yes, that's on the half a lot with...
There's nothing there now.
Nothing.
But that's what you'd like to do.
Yeah, it's 25 by 100 feet.
And then the shed, is it temporary thing? You're going to move that to the...
Yes, absolutely. I was hoping to have it gone by now. It was something that I didn't want to have to do in the first place, but my capabilities forced me to do something besides throw it out on the lawn.
So are you wanting to build a garage or bring in one of these sheds?
I want to bring in one of the ones that I've got there like that. I'm gonna pour, I want to pour a pad, a solid pad, and have it a building, a permanent building on that other half a lot.
Any other questions from the council?
Not yet. I might know. I might have others. Somebody else.
What is, what is that other building that's toward the back part of your property there? Not the temporary shed, but the one they were, that Duane was talking about?
Oh, this, this part? This is just part of an old garage that they put on there when the house was built. That's, you can drive in, but you can't get out of your vehicle in. It's so small.
What's your plans with that, then?
I would want to turn that into a little workshop. I do rocks and stuff and I've got cutters and stuff. I want to just turn that into a little shop because it's got a driveway there. None of that's there now, but I got a driveway there that I can pull things into and unload and do my rock work. As you get older, and I've been retired for 28 years, you have to take up some kind of hobbies to, and that's what I've done.
Any other questions?
Excuse me, your honor. And if I can put the garage there, that'll all be gone. It's just, I'm gonna, because I didn't want to, I didn't want to plan on looking at that shed all winter in front of my house. That was the worst thing I could, you know? And it's just a shed. It's temporary. It's just, it, I lifted it off the ground. It's not skirted. It's not anything. It's, the air blows in, the air blows out.
If you, if you built the garage, what would you do with the shed? Obviously, you'd still...
Oh, I'm gonna transfer it to my boys' properties.
They own this one?
Yeah, they own their own, too.
Okay.
Like, how fast would you be wanting to move this garage?
I will, it would have been gone if I'd had the garage there. So it's not gonna be able until spring before I can build the garage at this point. So I can't really give you a date or time period.
But that's what I was asking. Like, you're gonna build it or are you gonna bring in one of these...
I'm gonna bring in one of those, but the cement work is what I'm concerned about, you know? I've poured cement for years and you don't pour cement in this kind of weather and make it stay.
So you said you already had a cement pad?
Yeah, the driveway's already in there, yes.
And that's not where you're wanting to put the shed?
Well, back it up. Driveway's right here.
Oh, and...
Off the street.
And then you want to pour concrete underneath as a pad?
Yeah, I'm gonna pour, want to pour a pad back here.
Okay.
And make it a solid building. I went with the prefab buildings up at Martins here because it was gonna be faster than trying to get a contractor in there to do the job. And the contractor told me here a while back, he says, "I will not pour cement for you." So he said, "I can't guarantee it'll last in this kind of weather." And I said, "Understandable."
Is that, you said there's two lots there, but I don't see a separate property line, so...
There never was when I bought this. I put a fence around it all.
It, Mr., I think what he's saying is, Mr. Sellers, is his lot is a combination of a lot and a half.
That's right.
But it's one lot.
Yeah, I bought it as one lot originally, yep. And I bought, and the reason I bought it that way is because I wanted room to build a garage in the future.
Mr. Osterling, I have, I have a few questions.
Sure.
So the shed, the Planning Commission tabled your July request until September so you could move the items out of your house into your shed, get the remodel, refurbish on your house done, and then remove the shed. When do you expect to remove the shed?
As soon as the garage is built. I can move everything out of that shed and put it in there. Give me time to have help to move the, I've got to move all my furniture out of my house. If you've ever done a structural rebuild, you could, I can't have my couch and my tables and my end tables and my, everything, my TVs, all that stuff in a room to do as such. So, and it's a small residence. Like I said, it's 800, 824 square feet, something like that, which is nothing.
So is the shed full?
Yes. And believe you me, if, I wish it wasn't there, but I had to do what I had to do. And now I'm stuck in the middle of, excuse me, hell and a hole, so...
I have one more question.
Any other question, Mr. Sellers?
Just one more. I'm just trying to figure out, is it, I was on Planning and Zoning for a long time and I don't ever remember somebody that wasn't an owner applying for the conditional use permit, especially for a building or somebody that was really gonna change the property. And I'm not...
And there should, the record contains a consent to the application.
Yeah, there should be...
Yeah, there should be a record.
Aaron Osterling is part of the...
I was reading through that today, and it's...
It's in the record. Any other questions?
I have a question. In your letter that I read, this extra building is so you can bring your wife home, yes?
Eventually, yes.
Yes, so this is all about being able to bring your wife home?
Well, no, it's all about the garage being built so that I can move all that stuff so I can bring my wife home. I won't, until I get, until I can get all my furniture out of my home, which I'm incapable of doing because I broke my back down here working for the city a long time ago, so...
I guess what I'm having trouble with is, is not in the details, but it's in the cause. Your wife has a stroke, yes? I'm not hearing from her that she wants to come home, and I'm not hearing from her doctors that she is able to come home.
Well, she is not capable of coming home at this moment.
And so, at the root cause of this is the purpose of being able to build this to bring your wife home from what I was able to get...
Yeah.
From all of this, yet...
Right.
We don't know if she wants to come home, and we don't know if the doctors think that that's a great idea for her. Strokes, I don't know her condition, obviously, but it varies, and, you know, I have a lot of questions about that being the safest environment for her, or, you know, I need to hear from her doctors.
Well, you can ask my son what she tells him and stuff like that. She wants to come home. She cries every time I come here, and I want to come home. And she's progressed from completely not being able to move her left side to where she's standing and doing step, walking from here, back from here about this far, from here to there. And I think she's come quite a ways from the severity of her stroke. And that's, I can't do anything without being able to get her in my home.
I, I, believe me, I am completely empathize, actually. It's, but can she come home? Is that the most advisable thing from her doctors? We're making a decision off of a structure to bring a woman that has a stroke that can fall, and are you able to take care of her? I mean, this is going off a little bit, but these are the questions that go, are you able, you're disabled, you're back, I know you have your sons, but...
I plan on bringing in, like, cowboy care in to help her do the few things that I, when she does come home, that I can't, I can't do. Because I can take care of her, I can change her, I can do everything I need to do. The only problem I have now is her finishing being able to get up with me. She can get up with the therapist and stuff up there, but she can't. I, I'm just, like I said, I'm incapable of lifting her up out of a bed and putting her into a bathroom chair or whatever.
And there's help for that, there's, there's progress there.
Yes, and I've looked into all of that and have made arrangements for everything I need.
I guess what I would, I would ask is, is there, are her doctors on board with her coming home?
Well, actually, there's no doctors that are saying anything. Only one that's telling me anything is the therapist up there, how much she progresses, how she was able to get up the other day and go to the bathroom by herself.
I think I'd like to have a couple of clarifying, can we do that? Maybe Duane would be, I guess, Duane, if you, if you, can I do that?
Sure.
Duane, can you help me to understand on the, just to clarify, in my, if you can go back to the picture that shows the lot, that one, the green, I guess, a couple of questions. What I'd like to know is, that green, what he would like to do, are the setback requirements able to be met by that building?
Yes, that's correct.
And, but, but the size of the building is larger than, than what is typically allowed without a conditional use permit?
Yeah, and that's what the request is for, to allow an oversized building.
So the, the conditional use permit application did not include this, and I, I think that says illegal? Is that what it says?
The shed?
Yes, yeah, it doesn't comply with setback requirements.
That's outside of this application?
Yeah, and that's outside of the application.
Okay. Now, the other question I have is, is, did, did planning staff have a recommendation, a definite recommendation, recommendation on this particular application? And then I would like to know something about what took place at the planning and zoning level, if that's an appropriate thing to, to ask.
I believe in my staff report, I don't have that in front of me right now, but I believe I have in a recommendation that the planning commission could look at keeping, if he decided to keep the shed somewhere on the lot, that it'd be moved to a location that complied with setback requirements.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the...
That would be, and they would have to approve an additional increase with the addition of that, or the shed would need to be removed.
And I read...
And then establishing some kind of a timeframe, and that's what the planning commission So they had asked the applicant if, how long it would take to do the work, complete the improvements in the house, and a two to three month timeframe was offered. The planning commission gave that two months and, you know, to complete that work and to then remove the shed. Once the shed was removed by that date, and that, I don't know how that would have gone, but I believe they would have...
But I'm, I'm reading here, my, my confusion maybe is rising from, I'm, I'm reading, what I believe, anyway, is your recommendation, and it says here, "Staff recommends approval of the request subject to the following," and you've got several conditions or stipulations identified here. Did the, and then ultimately, I, my understanding is that the county or the planning and zoning commission denied the application. Did they take into consideration these stipulations, or what was that discussion? How did that, how did that go?
They, they had those stipulations. Keep, keep in mind, when I wrote the staff report, the staff report was, was prepared. It was completed. It was towards the end of the week, just before, prior to the Monday, from the planning and zoning commission meeting, when I, when I had verified that, yes, we got the shed there, there's an issue there. I, I've added that additional paragraph in, but the recommendation was based upon the original submittal.
And so your recommendation is...
So that, that was like, kind of a, you know, here's a surprise.
So what, what would be your recommendation right now as far as staff goes?
Well, if it's kept, or if it's, the oversized garage is approved, I, I think there would need to be some kind of a timeframe established for the removal of the shed.
But what I'm asking is, what is your, what is your recommendation on the approval of the, of the garage he wants to place?
I, I think it could help improve the property. The property does have a lot of clutter interior of the, of the site. There's a person that was at the planning commission meeting that testified that he would just like to see things cleaned up on the lot. And I, I think the addition of the garage would give a, a place to put some of that stuff out of sight and that, and help...
So I'm hearing...
Possibly help clean up the lot, which would be a good thing.
Your recommendation would be approval of that, not the little shed, that, that's, that's separate and, and apart from the larger structure, is that right?
Yes, I, I think that could be an improvement to the lot, yeah.
So if, your recommendation, it would be for approval of the, of the larger garage that he wants to place?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to follow up just a little bit. So my understanding was that delay, I just want to clarify the delay. He was supposed to move things out, remodel, and then move them back in, and then the garage was going to be approved, basically, is what I got from reading that original staff report, so...
No, that wasn't it.
I drove, I drove by, and I can see why the, that shed's a problem, so, as far as visibility and...
Any other questions?
I got a question. So the, the biggest stipulation on planning and zoning was, was the size, so that it takes up a certain, too big a percentage of the lot as far as an exterior building, correct?
Yeah, like I said, there, there's a lot of items and clutter and stuff on the lot. The shed is adding to that, so...
No, 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 if they were to build that garage, or put that garage in...
Yes.
Green area, they don't want that because it takes up too big a percentage of the lot as for an exterior building? Is that why it's, that's the denial of why we can't put that garage in? One of the denials?
Footprint of the house.
Percentage of the footprint of the house?
The, the denial is because you still have an additional shed on the lot that adds to that square footage.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
So, if I can, Councilmember Lynn, what had happened is, Mr. Jacobson noted that when the matter came up for hearing in July, the shed was discovered a few days prior to the hearing.
That external, or the one to the right?
Small.
Yes, okay.
The evidence was presented, the hearing was conducted, the planning and zoning commission ta, asked how long it would take to move the property out of the home, to the shed, make the rehab, refurbish, move the, move that, those items back into the house.
Okay.
Two to three months was stated. That put it in the middle of September. The planning commission tabled the whole application until that meeting in September, and thinking that the shed would be empty and could be removed. At the meeting in September, Mr. Osterling did not appear, for whatever reason, I mean, he can explain it, he's here. The planning commission then voted to deny the conditional use permit because the shed was still there and hadn't been removed.
So if that shed wasn't there and it wasn't removed, there's a good chance that they would have approved this garage?
We, we really don't know that.
We don't know that, but...
But I think, I think Mr. Jacobson said it was his recommendation then...
That's right.
That the garage, the fourteen by forty, whatever it is, structure be approved.
That's, so that's what I'm getting at, yeah.
With these conditions.
With those conditions.
And ultimately, the smaller structure would be removed?
Yes.
In my history on planning and zoning for nine years, we always approved those, but we never had a situation with an extra building that was brought in.
Can I say something? May I? And the only reason that shed was brought in is because of the bind I was put up between my wife, this garage, and a place to put all of my belongings. And I filled that up, and I haven't got any of my, had no place to throw all my furniture, my beds, my, I had to remove beds, I had to remove everything out of my front room, everything out of the bedrooms, everything out of the bathrooms, just to be able to open it up enough that I could real, roll a wheelchair through my home. And that's including my kitchen, kitchen tables. I would have had to move my refrigerator, my stove, everything out of my house, to basically empty it, to do the remodeling that I needed to do to bring my wife home.
It's your, it's your, your testimony here today, as you have been put under oath, that you would move that, remove that smaller shed?
Yes, absolutely. My word on it. I don't want it there. It's an ugly sight, I can't see out my window, I can't see to the street. Everything that I enjoyed about living in that area has been covered up by it, and it's been, excuse me, a pain in my ass the whole time. But I did, it was, I had a choice of bringing up those orange pods or the other pod business and have them stack around the front of my house because they were smaller than that by about a third, and I would have had to have three or four of them out in my house just to get my belongings, not my furniture, not my anything else, out of that place.
Granted, we're...
The shed was an afterthought?
I, I get that. I, granted, we're going into winter right now. What is, what is your perceived timeframe with the garage, not the shed?
I can't tell you that. It depends on the weather. Well, when did we, I, I'm going to put it at this, do you know when the last snowstorms we had were?
Yeah, my...
Beyond that.
But what is your, what is your plan for the construction? Is it first thing in the spring, the minute you're able?
First thing I can get a pad for, that garage's coming in. It's a two-week period for the garage.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Osterling. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Please state your name and address for us.
Aaron Osterling, 432 Center Street, and...
Mr. Osterling, would you raise your right hand for me, please, sir? Do you solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth and whole truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
I, me and my little brother own the property, and my dad's been doing this just so he could bring mom home. The shed was a temporary fix to get everything out while the, the garage was being built, and then all this happened. But as I own the property and everything, I favored in allowing him to put a, that other garage, and then the shed will be removed as soon as everything's finished with the
Any questions for Mr. Osterling? Mr. Aaron Osterling, sorry. Any questions for the council?
I have none.
Thank you, Mr. Osterling. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak concerning the application, either in favor of it or opposition? Ms. Cook. Please state your name and address.
Kathy Cook, 912 Main.
Would you raise your right hand for me, Ms. Cook? Do you solemnly swear or affirm in the testimony you're about to give, to tell the truth under penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm here to support him. I think it's, he's just trying to help, you know, his wife come home. I think it'll help clear out the, the yard as well. I think it's an easy to say, just go for it, just finish it up, and then your project's finished. The longer it goes on, then the, the winter is going to make it so he can't put the pad out that he needs. That's all I have to say.
Any questions for Ms. Cook? Any questions for Ms. Cook? Is there anyone else present who would like to testify to me? Once again, any members of the council have any questions?
I have one. It's probably directed towards Duane. If the council was to approve this and these actions weren't followed through on, as far as the shed being removed and the timeline and everything else, what repercussions does he face?
About the only repercussions I can think of right now is, is a citation for the violation of the shed. There's a few sections of the Cidico that it's in violation of right now.
So if he, if he did not build this by midsummer and was putting it off again, the...
If the shed continued to be there, we could issue a citation?
Would be, no, I'm talking about the garage. The conditional use permit would expire, and he wouldn't be able to build it? Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is, if the council approves this and nothing changes, I've got some doubts whether it would be followed through on. Does that make sense?
I, I, I think the council would probably want to consider a timeframe to complete the project. If it's not completed by that timeframe, you know, we, we can, like I said, we, we can look at, if the shed is still there, we can issue a citation and address it that way.
Mr. Mayor? Please. To follow up on what Mr. Jacobson just said, if the, if the council is inclined to grant the permit, I would recommend that you do set a timeline for completion of construction of the garage and removal of the shed, and set, set a specific date. Because in that event, that is a condition to the permit, if the condition is met... If the condition isn't met, the permit expires.
That answers my question. If that, so that conditional use permit can expire if it's not completed?
So if construction isn't complete, then the permit expires, which means that an applicant can start all over with another application. And that can be true if the, if the council were to deny the permit. Mr. Osterling could come back next spring and start over. That answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions for the council?
Just, and this is probably for both of you. So right now, we're sitting with a shed that's in violation of city code. Is there something that is supposed to happen with that, or is there something we, that, is that, is there a pass on that, or what's the, what is, I'm trying to put my head around?
A letter has been sent to Mr. Osterling already notifying him of the violations of the city code, and there was a date set that if the shed did not come into compliance with city code, that a citation would be issued. We passed that, that date, that was included with that letter. So, yeah, I-
Has a citation been issued?
No, a citation hasn't been issued. I've put a hold on that just to see where we went this evening with the hearing.
And I wanna take your question, but following that, you know, adding to Mr. Sellers, is there something that could be done with that shed, not the garage, the little shed? Is there something that could be done? Could it be moved in such a fashion that would bring it into compliance? Would it have room to do something like that?
He could. He could move it to comply with setback requirements.
He has room to do that, he has?
And I'm not sure where he would be able to locate that on the lot, but that would be something that he might be able to look at.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
That may be also a condition that the commission, excuse me, the council may wanna consider, is to require that it be relocated in conformance with setbacks.
Right, yeah.
If it's a temporary structure, and I defer to, you know, Duane, Mr. Jacobson on this, but if it's a temporary structure, I don't know. If it's a permanent structure, it's gonna require a building permit. And I think he notes in his staff comments that, says if the new shed is to remain, it will have to be relocated, and a building permit will be required to be obtained. If it's temporary, I don't know if it requires a building permit, but I think-
It does require a building permit.
But I think he oughta require a permit, and then if the council's inclined to, to make it conform with the setbacks.
Okay. Thank you. But we're still doing the public hearings, so Mr. Harris is managing this hearing for us.
Anything else? Any other questions?
I don't think any questions.
All right. Hearing in this matter is-
What about in opposition?
Pardon?
What about if someone's speaking opposition?
I already called it, but go ahead.
When did you, I didn't hear you say that.
Yeah, I said anyone else. Would you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Would you please state your name?
Merrill Thompson, 236 Madison Butte.
Go ahead.
Speaking as a member of the general public, I don't know if any of you have ever driven by Mr. Osterling's property, but it's pretty much a disaster all the time. There is stuff all over. I happened to drive by it today. He's got four kitchen chairs sitting out on the corner of his property. I did drive by there last Thursday, and the shed door was open. There was a ladder in there, and some, oh, small amount of things in there. The shed is not full. My question to Mr. Osterling is if he's so concerned about bringing his wife home and needs place to put his, his belongings, which I can't understand why you have to empty your house out to widen doorways. Why has he not rented a storage unit? Why does he, why has he fought all this and spending all this money at keeping his wife in a, in the rest home, or in the, wherever she is living at this moment, because he doesn't have a garage, which he cannot build now until springtime? Why not rent a storage unit and move his belongings into a storage unit? Where he could then work on his home and bring his wife home, if she is capable of coming home? If you think by this, him building this garage is gonna clean up his lot, I think you're mistaken, because his lot's never been cleaned up, ever. It can't take two months. He was given from July. If you file, if you read, or, I'm sorry, if you view the video from the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is open to the public, is available to any member of the public, and I believe was sent to the city council. If you view that, you can see that the Planning and Zoning Commission gave Mr. Osterling two months to try and empty out his property and get his construction done that he needed to do. And then come back, go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and go from there. Maybe explain that he needed more time, maybe then say, okay, but he was given two months to move the shed off the property, and then come back and plead his case to the Planning and Zoning Commission for his garage. He did not even bother to show up for his meeting two months later. That's the respect he has for the city in itself. The shed's on the property, knowing he needed a permit to put the garage on because he was going to be over the size that was allowed, he still brings the shed in just a week, two weeks before his hearing, original hearing in July, for the garage. He didn't bother to show up for his meeting, even to see if he's gonna be allowed to put the garage on. My basic question is, why not rent a storage unit? Why are we listening to him plead over this, that he didn't have a garage so he can't bring his wife home? Why not rent a storage unit, Mr. Osterling?
Because I'm not capable of moving things to it.
Then rent some movers. You have a, you have a son who lives-
We're not, we're not gonna have a back and forth here.
Right down the street. Rent some movers.
Wait, wait.
Rent some movers.
Wait.
One at a time.
There's my question. He can answer it for you.
I've got a question. Is that, can I, unless we do something else? I know your position on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Not speaking as zoning.
I'm asking a question-
Okay.
-based on, based on that, that if not for this smaller, if not for the smaller shed and its placement, do you, do you have an opinion whether or not the larger building would have been approved?
I can't speak for my commission. I don't vote unless they need me.
I'm asking you, what?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay.
It, you know, it, it may possibly have been approved.
Okay.
But I, I can't speak for my commission.
Any other questions for me? Thank you. Any other testimony? Any other questions? They're being done. The public hearing on this application will be closed. Mr. Mayor is now before the council.
Okay, thank you. I guess I don't, I don't know what, what other people are thinking here. I guess what I'm, what I'm hearing, whether it's accurate or not, is I have a tendency to believe that, that the smaller shed is a, is a, is an issue, and rightly so. I agree with that completely. I think that smaller shed poses some issues for me. It seems as if maybe if we, if we took that smaller shed out of the equation, I'm supposing, maybe, maybe inaccurately, that the, that the larger structure, the garage, would have been constructed, it doesn't, or approved, I guess, maybe is the better way to say that. And so from my perspective, I think if we, somehow, I don't know how we ensure that the stipulations that we might consider are actually complied with, quite honestly. But, but I, and I don't know how to do that. I mean, I know what a citation might do, I know what a violation might do, and I know oftentimes those things are, can be, and I'm not suggesting it will be, but I can tell you that many times those things are overlooked or ignored by a variety of people. And I'm not, I'm not pointing a finger or suggesting that that would be the case here. What I am saying is, is that happens. And so I guess I would be, I would be willing to consider the approval of that larger structure with a very carefully worded requirement that the smaller shed be brought into compliance. Setback requirements are removed from the property in its entirety within a certain hour. Granted, we're going into the winter, I recognize that. Construction is hampered, I get that. And so what that timeframe might be, November, December, I can't imagine much happening before April or May at the very earliest. And so I don't know. That's kind of, I don't know if somebody else's got some feelings.
I, I think this, I agree. The small shed's the problem. When I read the staff report from Planning and Zoning, I know, we didn't always vote for what the staff report said, but a lot of the time, the majority of the time, we took a lot of consideration. And like I said, in all my years of, I couldn't figure out why this didn't get approved. And then when the, I read all the stuff about the small shed, I, it became, it became very clear. I'd have a hard time voting for the whole thing without some type of plan. I would, I would like to, I would like to see the shed gone next week. I mean, I know that's, I mean, if we could have it done that quick, then it becomes, I think it becomes, to me, pretty, pretty straightforward. I, that, that, that creates a problem for me, because we're out of compliance, we gotta issue, and...
Since anything, every, we can't do anything, nobody can do anything for spring, till spring. You know, we can't do anything. I'd like to see this, you know, you promised something, the shed, you weren't able to deliver. I'd like to see some good faith, you know, like in the springtime, having that moved, and then coming back and looking at this big building, knowing your wife's condition is moved forward. But, you know, I'm, I'm looking at promises that are consistently, for good reason, not produced. So it's hard to make a decision for me on this, because I don't have... Yeah.
Mr. Osterling, we're done with the testimony.
So-
Time to make a decision, folks.
I guess I, I would consider, I would consider a motion with some stipulations regarding the, the smaller shed and its brought into compliance or removal under a specific timeframe. And I think I could, but if there's somebody who wishes to make a motion regarding this, I don't know that I'm wanting to do that, but if somebody wants to make a motion that would include that, I might be able to support that.
I'm still stuck on the dates. We gotta have dates.
I think you, I mean, realistically, you gotta, with Mayor coming and everything, you gotta give him, if it was to be approved, you gotta give him till end of July?
Yeah.
Or in that area? Say that, that smaller shed's gotta be gone, you gotta have construction completed, you know, everything's gotta be up to snuff by the end of July. I think that's a plenty of timeframe. It's just, I have a problem with the little shed right now being out of compliance, that, because it's gonna be sitting there all winter. And from what I can tell, the thought of it's like, well, can you move it anywhere? It doesn't seem to be that you can move that little shed anywhere to be within compliance, unless you put it right where he wants to build his garage. So that's, it's kind of what comes first, the chicken or the egg? You know, I, I also think that, was there some good faith in saying, hey, you know, move that and probably get approved? I don't know. That's hard.
It's tough. Obviously, nothing's going to happen this winter.
Are there certain citations that you could have for not complying? Can we add with conditions any other possible repercussions? Other than just the normal citation for not following through?
I think, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, that would be difficult, because it's set in the code. And that's what, you know, planning and zoning codes are based on, to try to make everything uniformly applicable everywhere. It doesn't mean you don't, you know, grant permits or variances were required, but I think the answer to the question is, is you, if, if you're going to grant the permit for the garage, the one, let's just call that the one accessory building, if you do grant that permit and put a timeframe from which the garage must be complete, if it's not complete, then the permit lapses. It's revoked or canceled, if you will. The other thing is, is that you can have different timeframes for the shed to be removed. I mean, you could set it months before or whatever. You could do that. But the other thing for consideration is the building permit for that shed and compliance with the setbacks, pending whatever you decide to do.
So if we, if we were to pass this, do we leave, we don't give up, I'm sitting there, if we pass this, we're, I'm getting the feeling we're giving them a pass on a building sitting, not sitting on the setbacks? Is that?
You can, you can require that, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Sellers, you can require that the shed be moved within proper setbacks and a building permit be approved within 30 days, two weeks. You can require anything, anything there. We know what the setbacks are, and we know that there's a permit for the, for the building permit. And you acquire a different date for completion of the garage, the accessory building itself?
My concern is, I, I see that the Planning and Zoning was really trying to help, help him and give him a few months, and then even knowing that building was out of compliance and doing, and letting that go, and saying by September meeting, first, the first Monday in September, you have that all taken care of, and, and the recommendation was very positive from Mr. Osterling, very positive. And, and I don't want us to come back into July, first of July, and all of a sudden even have a garage built, and then the shed's still there, and, oh, I need to have that here, and then us being stuck between a rock and a hard place.
And then the other thing, I guess my other question for you, Mr. Harris, is, is if this was denied, denied tonight in its entirety, Mr. Osterling could make changes to his property to bring the smaller shed into compliance, receive a building permit for that, and then could reapply. Obviously, he's not going to do anything, not be able to do anything this winter, but he could then reapply at some future point for the, the larger garage, once the smaller building was brought into compliance with setback.
That's correct.
And he could do that on his own with a denial and then reapply?
That's correct.
Okay.
That makes the most sense.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
What does that motion say? What, how do you wanna work? Put you on the spot, sorry.
Okay.
The motion would be that we will not approve the large structure until the small structure meets the proper setbacks and complies with what's, where it's supposed to be, or have it moved, and then come back and apply for the full garage.
Does that make sense, Mr. Harris, to you?
Okay. I need to run that by me again?
Go ahead, Tim. Go ahead, Mr. Lynn. Go ahead and say that again, so we get this right.
The small shed to be removed or moved to comply with the legal setbacks, and after that is done, then approve the large garage, but until then, no approval on the large garage, until the small one- on the large garage until the small one meets the compliance of the city standards or...
I have a suggestion. If that's inclination of the council, state that the conditional use permit for the accessory building, the garage, would be approved only when the small shed is removed and/or complies with setbacks in permits. So that way then he wouldn't have to come back.
There you go. That makes good sense.
And I would suggest that you put a time limit for when the construction would have to be done.
So your, your motion then would, would mean we would approve this based on the smaller structure being brought into compliance one way or another?
Yes.
With setbacks by end of July?
Or removed.
Or removed, something like that.
July 31st.
What's that?
Well, it's July 31st for a day.
Well, we're, we're just talking about the removal right now, so I think we need to look at that probably earlier, earlier in the spring, but that's...
We can, but then there's always the excuse for weather.
Yeah.
We don't know what the weather's going to bring.
So is it...
If it's done earlier, it's done, then he complies with building the big one.
So your...
It makes sense.
He's saying, I think, that construction just be complete all around by July 31st.
By July 31st, is that what you're saying? So your motion would be that, that the larger, the garage be approved based on the smaller structure being, being removed and the other one being constructed by July 31st?
Correct.
Is that your motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. And I think he said that, that in the interim time, if the smaller structure isn't removed, it has to comply with setbacks and building permits.
Correct. Okay. Does everybody understand that motion?
So the first thing that has to happen is the little shed has gotta be in compliance. If that becomes in compliance, then the larger structure, the garage, you have till July 31st to have that constructed and completed.
I think the way the motion is worded is that all of it has to be completed by, all of the situations have to be remedied and the building constructed by December, by July 31st.
Correct.
Is that what I'm, is that the way you understood that?
Yes.
So that smaller building doesn't have to be in compliance first?
Wouldn't necessarily have to be removed, as long as it's removed by July 31st.
Yeah. Okay. So it's fine to have all of it completed by July 31st?
The whole thing.
We're good. Okay.
That's, is that your motion?
Correct.
Is that the way you've understood that, Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Okay. I guess if that's the motion, we have motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Lynch, second by Mr. Sellers. Discussion.
I guess I just want to get it so we're clear. He's gotta tell July 31st to get all this done. And does he have to apply for a permit in the meantime for that building or this gives him conditional use permit? He's good to go as long as he complies with everything?
He'll have to, he'll have to have a building permit for the garage.
For the garage, though.
Gets ready to construct.
Okay.
And, or placement. Let's see, we can use the term placement.
Okay.
And the smaller structure has to be appropriately...
Yeah.
Or in compliance. Brought into compliance one way or another.
Okay. Removed.
Well, the building permit be issued on, on the base, that somebody verifies that the structure's removed or is it just kind of, or in, brought in compliance?
There's two building permits, Councilmember Hickman. One is for the small shed and one is for the garage.
The garage is whatever.
My understanding, and when we were discussing this before, and you can ask Mr. Barker, but my understanding is that the slab for the garage would not require a building permit to place. Is that right, Dean?
Yeah, you could, you could pour concrete on that. The foundation, things like that would be...
So he could, he could do that as soon as the weather...
As soon as the weather would allow him.
But that wouldn't require a building permit for that accessory garage. But there will be one required before the building is actually placed there. And there will be one required for the shed.
Right.
Regardless.
Right. Any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Opposed.
Mr. Perks? Your vote?
I'm opposed.
I oppose because I have some doubts of whether this is all gonna come about. I'd rather see that shed moved. You know, I had to explain my no vote. I'd rather see that small shed come into compliance than having to just reapply for the whole thing later. That's the reason for my no.
Fair enough. Fair enough. So Mr. Lynch, Mr. Lynch, myself, and Mr. Sellers?
Four, two?
Four. And Mr. Perks, Ms. Hickman, opposed. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is a board appointment. We have a opportunity to put Mr. Rocco O'Neil on the golf course advisory board. He's expressed a willingness. I don't know how. He gives me the thumbs up. So I'd like to bring forth the name of Rocco O'Neil to, to serve on the golf course advisory board for a three-year term to end January 2026, if somebody'd like to make a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch? Mr. Lynch, seconding? Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That is done. Thank you, Rocco, for your willingness. We have no consent agenda nor unfinished business. We'll go to new business and we'll start there with Resolution 2374. Mr. Harris, will you read that title for us, please?
Mr. Mayor of the Council, Resolution 23-74, including authorizing final plat of the subed edition, requiring replanning the new lot 10 and lot 11 of block line adjustment map, or final 10 and lot 11 of block 12 of the original town of Evanston, is more particularly
Thank you. Mr. Jacobson.
So the Subed addition is proposing to take two lots that were created by a lot line adjustment a few years back. Originally, they had proposed to, the previous owner had proposed to do a twin home development. So that, that's why it's, the lot is subdivided or divided the way it is. The new property owner is proposing to take these two lots, lots 10 and 11, block 12, the original town of Evanston, it's located just across the street from us on Main Street, and create a one-lot subdivision for a single-family home. So there is a, a minimum lot size requirement in the low-density residential established district, and that is 6,000 square feet. As you can see, combining the, the two lots, the original lots and the adjusted lot line map, maintained a 2,500 square foot lot. Those, those are typical lot sizes within this area of town. So by combining those two lots, it does bring the lots closer to conformance with, with the 6,000 square foot minimum lot size requirement. So it's still considered to be a, a legal non-conforming lot, even with the combination of the two lots.
Those lot sizes were created prior to that regulation being put into place?
That was part of the, yeah, that was part of the original plat of the original town of Evanston. So there are no new easements that are proposed with this subdivision. The city subdivision review committee has, well, let me back up. Do I, do you have the larger plat? So on the larger plat, I just want to point out here, there is a house on the adjacent block that you may be wondering about. There is an encroachment onto that color shaded area that we're proposing for a subdivision. They're not proposing to adjust lot line boundaries at this time. There's other avenues that they can consider, you know, agreement between abutting property owners, you know, when the house is removed or, or destroyed by any means, that it be constructed off, off of their property or... I had spoken with Mr. Subedra and sounded like that is probably the direction, so likely something that will be addressed between just the two property owners. It's been existing that way for a number of years and, and will likely continue, you know, until such time that the house is removed or destroyed. So the city subdivision review committee has reviewed this subdivision request. There are no issues reported with that, so staff, our recommend, recommendation, we recommend approval, subject to the standard conditions that reproduce my, reproducible mylar copy of the final plat be submitted to our office. And once we receive that, we'll be able to issue a building permit application for Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions before we move forward with this? Seems pretty straightforward. Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
I'll say for the year.
Sellers? Perks, seconding? Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That is approved. Resolution 2375, Mr. Harris, please.
Mr. Mayor of the Council, Resolution 23-75, the resolution including authorizing final plat of the hotel Evanston addition subdivision, follow lot 4, 5, 6, 7, speaking of block 5 of the original town of Evanston, is more particularly described.
Thank you. Mr. Jacobson.
Okay, so the Hotel Evanston building sits on lots 5, 6, 7, and a portion of lot 5. There is an addition that was built many years ago on, on that southern side of the Hotel Evanston building, on the remaining portion of lot 5. So that area is highlighted in, in the gold. And the other lot that's involved with this subdivision is lot 4 of block 5 of the original town of Evanston. That has had a few uses. We've had a longstanding use some years ago as Michael's Bar and Grill. There's a new owner of the property that's got a, a new business that's proposed at that location. And what is being proposed is, is to close off the, the access between the Hotel Evanston building and that addition, and then open up access from the building on lot 4 into that addition. Essentially, they're looking to increase the size of lot 4 to include that, that addition onto their building. So the, again, each one of these lots down here, standard size has been 25 feet along the street frontage and 100-foot in depth, so 2,500 square feet for each lot. Now, in this particular zoning district, it is owned, regional business established. And within that district, there is a minimum lot size of 2,500 square feet. And I believe city code was written to include that in the regional business just because of those standard lot sizes within our, our downtown district. So the, the proposed subdivision proposes lot sizes that are larger than the 2,500 square feet per building requirement, so that the subdivision does meet our, our lot size requirements of the city code. No easements are proposed. All utilities are located either within the alley or within Front Street. So nothing needed there. The city subdivision review committee, we've sent this off for comments. There are no concerns expressed by the subdivision review committee. Again, staff does recommend approval of the final plat of the Hotel Evanston addition, subject to the same conditions as the previous one, that a mylar copy of the final plat be submitted to our office, and then we can issue a building permit to make those changes with the building addition that's located abutting to the hotel and the building on lot 4.
That lot 4, I just want to make sure, it looks, I know, and I know your, if you go back to that last one you just had, I just got a quick question. And I know the, the outline that you've got there is a little skewed, but how, that smaller lot there to the, to the southeast, how does that, I mean, how is that in relation to the building that is, that is underlying over that, over that? I mean, is, it almost, it appears to me as you look at this now that that lot intersects down the middle of that building, but I granted that that's a little skewed. Help me to understand that, if you will.
Are you talking about this area?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that, that does include a building. It overlaps. It's skewed a little bit. It does overlap.
The entire...
The building addition next to the hotel, but no, property lines are on the, where the building walls are.
Okay. That's all I was concerned about. Oh, Eric maybe's got?
Eric. Eric Quall, Human Engineering. To address your concerns about how the photo looks there, the line work isn't exactly correct, but part of the other issue you have when you're looking at that is the oblate angle of the, the photograph. So the top of the buildings are leaning over, so you, even if the line work were correct, because of the angle that this photo was taken, it, it makes it, it really obscures how the property is. So to answer that question, that's, that's what the, the major issue is. The actual property line is, will be the face of the Hotel Evanston. And that's, that's how it was surveyed and that's how it's done. So the actual Hotel Evanston, that line is, is where the property line will be.
Okay. And I appreciate, and I, I kind of knew that, I just wanted to make sure that we addressed, so that if somebody's looking at this picture, they wonder how, why are you approving this?
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Exactly. And you're not actually approving the picture, you know, so...
Right. Okay. Thank you. Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Mr. Lynch, a motion.
I need to recuse myself from this one.
Okay.
I'll second it.
One, Mr. Perks, seconding? Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved with one recusal. Resolution 2376, Mr. Harris, please.
Resolution 2376, the resolution of the city of Evanston, authorizing a new amendment for transportation, alternative program, self-assisting, between the Miami Park Transportation and the city of Evanston. Evanston, Roundhouse, Pro, and Access under the project.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barker.
Good evening. Thanks for your patience. I know this is what we're all came to talk about with this agreement extension, so I appreciate your patience, but this is a, the TAP grant, for those, maybe council members that aren't familiar with this one, this was a, this is a YDOT grant. It's a federal grant from the Federal Highways administered through YDOT for transportation type projects of, like safe routes to school, trailheads like, like this one. So that's what this grant is. We were hung up in, so we had a completion date of descent into, into the year this year. We got hung up in historic preservation and shipo approval and review and kind of delayed us like a year in that process. us like a year in that process, and so that's why our grant representative from YDOT has prepared this agreement for another year extension, and we just need to get it signed so that we can, it's under, it's 95% designed right now through Forestry and Engineering and should go out to bid this spring.
This is just asking for more time again?
Yeah, yep.
Is there a introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass. I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, seconding? Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That's approved, thank you. And before you can go tonight, I need to have a, after we're done, I gotta, I gotta talk to you a minute, stick around for a second. Comments from departments? Mr. Robinson, you're farthest left here, I think. Chief Vanish?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Lynn? Mr. O'Neil?
None, sir.
Parker? Mr. Jacobson? Anybody else? Ms. Harris? Mr. Harris? Public participation, is there anyone here from the public that would like to address the council for any reason? Okay, if not, we will adjourn, thank you, everyone.